American Red in it.
Yeah, I was checking out the bar. I haven't seen anything.
Not much. He may have thought I figured. He makes it seem here shocking. Get that out of both sides.
He's obsessed with how tall she is. She is tall. We don't know how tall she is. She's like assessed, she has to be four or five foot. We don't know if she actually is on a.
We're going to begin tonight's proceedings. Our invocation will be Oak Hill High School's very own Krista Gill, our FCA student leader. Please stand.
Guys, for this opportunity, if we get off our heads. Lord, we thank you for this day and this time we have to freely gather here together. Lord, I pray as we are gathered here today that you create this council wisdom to help make the correct decisions for this community. Just like how in Galatians six verse nine, it says, and let us not go weary while doing the good. For in due season, we shall reap if we do not lose heart. God, I pray that you do not let the members of this council get tired of this responsibility. But continue to do good works, that you will continue to give them the desire to do good. I pray wisdom and direction over this council meeting. And thank you, Lord, for all that you've done and all the good things to come. Jesus name, amen.
And our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God that we meet on this day in America. To the God who would just stand as one nation under God, and in the middle of all, whatever he needs, for all.
I now call the order of this city council meeting, May thirteenth, six P M. City of Oak Hill, West Virginia. We'll now have our roll call.
Mayor Charles Frisco.
Here.
Council, councilors from Ward one, Terry Van Buschert.
Here.
Roger Evans.
Here.
Diana Janey.
Here.
Counselors from Ward two, Tim Buskis.
Here.
P J Elder.
Here.
Chris Gill.
Here.
Counsel at large, Bill Hannabass.
Here.
Thank you. And we'll move on to our approval of our minutes. I take it to all that read them. If you need any questions, go ahead and do that now, or do I do the votes to accept them?
I'll make the motion that we can.
A second.
The question has been properly moved, the second, that the minutes be approved. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Do the same for the treasurer's report? Your motion?
The motion to.
Do we have any questions on the motion before? I'm sorry. Were there any questions about the treasurer's report? Sorry, I'm sorry.
I make the motion to approve the support.
Question had properly moved, the second, that we accept the treasurer's report? All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion is carried, treasurer's report is accepted. Do we have any correspondence? No correspondence at this time. Okay, we're going to move right along into our citizens' comments. And first, we have Janine Robinson with Destination Downtown. Robinson, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council. Love the phone here, so I can actually read it. First, I want to say Destination Downtown, we are still active. We are still a community organization. A lot of people think we dissolved, we aren't doing things. We're not doing as much as we used to. That's one hundred percent true, but we are still active. I think there's been a big misunderstanding between, or maybe lack of communication is a better word, between the city and the amphitheater committee and Destination Downtown. About two or three weeks ago, I was informed that there were rumors flying around town that we were unwilling and non-bending on letting the amphitheater use our projector. That's untrue, one hundred percent. No one has approached me, no one has called me and said, hey, can we use your equipment? It came to another member of the group. I can't make that decision, the other member can't make that decision. It's a very large, expensive piece of equipment. So we had a meeting, we have discussed it at length. We have no problem with allowing amphitheater to use the projector. Our concern is what happens if there's damage to the projector or it is broken accidentally, these things can be dropped, they're expensive. So our thought process was, we will happily lease it to you for the low, low cost of one dollar for the use of the the projector. With that being said, we would like a lease agreement drawn up to say if it's damaged while in your possession, that, you know, it's either replaced or the value of it is given back to Destination Downtown so that we can purchase a new one. Because it's about three thousand dollars right now to replace the one that we have. I think a new one will run somewhere between five and six thousand dollars. The screen is in city storage here at the amphitheater. The screen is outrageously expensive. I want to say around nine thousand dollars when it was first purchased. There is a slight tear in the screen that we noticed a couple of years ago, but with very careful handling this, you know, that's not an issue. It's always been stored here at the city. But if we can get a, an agreement together, we will happily, you know, let the amphitheater group use this. We know it's inexpensive. We don't want them to have to ramp one, the city to have to pay for one. That's an unnecessary expense when it will cost you a whole dollar and a couple of signatures. And please know that anybody can contact me at any time. I'm on Facebook Messenger. Most everybody here has my phone number. If you don't have my phone number, I'll happily provide it to you. Anytime you have a question about Destination Downtown, feel free, you know, we will be having more and more meetings. And we'll be happy to share any information with you guys that we can. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions on this promise? Thank you, Ms. Robinson. All right, Ms. DeMello, are you?
Good evening. First, I just wanted to say that I've been watching progress of the playground and I cannot wait for the handicap playground to open up so I can take my daughter there. It looks absolutely amazing what I've seen so far. The reason I'm here is because the last time I was here was seven months ago and it was about the streets on Virginia, the sidewalks. I really just wanted to know what was going on with it. I know it's a state on road. But I would like to know why there's been no progress made, why nothing's happened yet. When it would probably get done, when we could see some progress, just so that we know what's going on.
We're in the design phase still of that sidewalk project, so that we're just at the thirty percent stage there. Then we have to apply for a grant for the construction of the sidewalks, so I think we're still looking at probably another three to four years when we can put a sidewalks.
So it was said last time that we only had a grant for the Virginia streets sidewalks.
We don't have the grant for the design phase. We have to apply, it's, we're in the, we can do that now, now's the time to apply, but they won't announce that award. So.
They did initially.
Oh, yes, initially.
And we did talk to the state about putting a handicap for a crosswalk in.
Yes.
Duncan. They do not recognize it. They said that, because the only thing they'll do is put up a sign. We could put it in, but they're not going to be reliable for somebody crossing there. It would be us put a sidewalk from the street to the rail streets. And I think we, we talked about doing this. But we wanted to kind of wait till they get closer to have the handicap grant there.
Mr. Fruit.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've just got a few questions. I've just been hearing some stuff about a school at Harlem Heights had both have been demolished somehow, the contractor got behind in his work. And it kind of put our project in limbo. And I'd like to know what's going on with that.
I talked to someone the other day and explained to her that that project was part of a grant. The contractor could not meet the deadline of the grant, so that that grant is now gone. So if we get awarded that in the next year, we could your school back in that project, but right now there's no funds for that.
Well, how long would it be for the next round?
I don't know. I don't know when they're gonna offer that again. They say one's coming up, but they haven't given us the timeline.
Because it's a, it's a danger hat. It's dangerous out there, the way the building's sitting, it's going to collapse. Hoping a kid won't be there, we're going to have to put some tape or something up, but it's a dangerous situation.
And we understand that, and we were going to try to help you through that grant, but now, you know, that would be your responsibility until we could get some.
Okay, I've got one more question. What about the playground in Medda, Percy's Park? What's going on with that?
Well, we talked to you about that has to be signed over to us. So until that gets signed over to us, we can't do anything. And ACE won't give their part until that's also done.
Or we signed, or we sent out some paperwork for playground amendment, did we win that Percy's Park?
You know, what has happened to those responses to that?
I haven't looked in while I was looking.
I just wanted to get an idea of what was going on with that. Okay, for you. We'll do what we can to keep it safe out there. And keep us in mind, please.
We will. We haven't forgotten. The community. That runs that at Harlem Heights.
Unity Restoration Worship Center.
Thank you, Mr. Fruit. And I'll move on to unfinished business. We will have a presentation by Mr. Tom O'Neill. He's the Government Affairs Representative of Optimum Cable. This is in reference to the consideration of an agreement between the city of Oak Hill and Optimum Cable for the purchase and installation of a dedicated fiber line Oak Hill City Hall for the sum of twelve thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you inviting me to join you and the other members of the council this evening. My name is Tom O'Neill. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for for the state of West Virginia. I'm joined today by my colleague Mike Miller, who runs all of our head end facilities, very important, way more important guy to the company than I am. But the reason that we're here tonight is to discuss the city's interest in getting public, its government access channel or channels back on the air on the local cable system. Under the franchise agreement that we have with the city, the, the city can have up to three government access channels. Our responsibility under the, under the franchise agreement is to provide the channel space on the lineup for the, the city. The city, in turn, is responsible for actually programming the channels, deciding what goes on the air, and then delivering the signal from the production facility, which I understand is intended to be here at City Hall, from the production facility to the head end. So once, once that happens, then the signal can be sent out on the system, the citizens can watch, interact, and, and you all can enjoy the benefits that come with having the, the government access channel. So in preparation for the meeting tonight, Mr. Miller, I and other members of our team have been working with Mr. McGuffin to discuss kind of what the needs are, the, the build costs. So in order to deliver that signal from the production facility to the head end, it requires fiber optic line for reliability and other technical reasons that I'm not really equipped to discuss, but, but we deliver the signal over fiber from here to the, to the head end. The construction cost associated with that is approximately twelve thousand, it's a little under twelve thousand dollars, and I think the, the quote that we saw was eleven thousand eight hundred and change, and we can, you know, that's, as most things happen with, with construction, you know, costs, it's the best approximation that anybody can make kind of ahead of time. So if the council is, is interested, what I would propose is that they issue, and that construction needs to be undertaken by, by optimum personnel. So what I, if the city wants to move ahead with, with its channels, what I recommend is that the city issue optimum of a purchase order for the construction of the fiber line. We would work with Mr. McGuffin or whoever the council designates to identify where in City Hall the production facility would be. We would run the line, patch it in at the head end level, and then at such time as you're ready to begin production of the, you know, get into the TV production business and put whatever you'd like. You know, as long as the FCC doesn't object, whatever, not, whatever you'd like, but whatever you'd like within, within the appropriate context, you know what I mean? To, to get that going and, and the citizens and the city can benefit from that. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. If you have any questions of a more technical nature, I defer to my colleague, Mr. Miller. But be happy to.
I'm, I'm pretty sure there is currently fiber that runs down Main Street.
I think you're right, and we had actually discussed that. When, in order to prepare for this meeting, what we had to do is, we took the, the we developed the quote based on a Greenfield build. Now, if we get in and once our construction team gets in, if they see that there's already fiber down there, that, that we can use. Now, just because there's fiber down there doesn't mean that it's going to be, there's space available or it's the right kind or whatever to, to use for this, this use. But clearly, if we're able to patch into an existing line, the cost of that construction is going to be down. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is that that twelve thousand is kind of the outside, that's the top end cost that we would expect. And if it's, if it comes back significantly less expensive because we're able to use facilities that, that are already in place, you know, clearly, you know, that clearly would be reflected in the final cost.
Where are you looking at? Like the now to, right now, for this, to bring it to the City Hall?
Well, I, I mean, we're, we're talking about bringing it to City Hall, we mean where in City Hall?
No, 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 no. Where in the, where at now? Where would you tap? Branch off of that? Then bring it here.
The head end is, is located in Beckley that feeds the signals here, so we go from City Hall through a, a building, a hub we call in Oak Hill, all the way to Beckley. That's where that fiber would, would end, and that's how we broadcast the signals to.
I'm sure. You said that there might be fiber up here you could tap on to, like, where would it be in the city that you would physically go to to run it to here?
Probably.
To the twelve grand.
I could probably answer that question.
Okay. Is it like one of the other side streets or something? Because I know there's some right down in, on Central.
Yeah, I actually had a in-depth discussion about the nearest fiber connection. And the way it was described to me, there's a fiber line runs up Central and the nearest point that City Hall could, could be connected would be School Street. So that, hopefully that answers your question. That's, that's approximate, but that's.
It's School Street? Okay, runs up Central.
It's School Street behind here. And you have to read this fiber directly across the street. But if you know anything about fiber, you just can't put a T like in a water line, you know, a fiber connection, it has to be point to point. So to my knowledge, the fiber across the other side of Main Street, all those are currently being utilized. But School Street would be the nearest connecting point, to my best of my knowledge, and we pulled it up. Upland has a mapping system on the fiber in City of Oak Hill. And Central and School Street would be the nearest connection.
We would have to verify continuity from that School Street all the way to Beckley, West Virginia, so the barber might be on School Street, but we take, we would take equipment and verify it goes to all the way to the Beckley, West Virginia route.
Still in Harper or you in Beckley Park?
We're in Harper, yeah, yep, that's right, yes, sir.
Right, so, so to answer your question, just because fiber exists currently doesn't mean that we can use it for the use that that we can to transmit that broadcast signal to the head end. But.
The approximate price, if you could connect Oak Hill City Hall that we're, that we're in now to the fiber on School Street, intersection of School Street and Central Avenue, and it connects to Beckley. How, what are we looking at?
I cannot, I can't answer that, because that's, that's a construction question and, and that our construction director is out, he had surgery on the side, so I think I can get answers to those questions before, you know, before too long. But, but again, just because that there's fiber running down Main Street doesn't mean that it's suited for the purpose that we're talking about here.
Hey, I could, I can add one to that. The projected cost of the fiber, there's actually two parts to that. The construction of the fiber itself, point to point, and the equipment connected to either end of the fiber. So there's a rack mounted on either side that's connected to the fiber, then on completely off the left building, the technical side, boring you guys. That includes those two pieces of equipment on each end of the fiber. That's the only thing I can't provide on my end is those two pieces of equipment and fiber connection itself. So, and a little bit of back history on those, approximately two thousand nineteen, federal all changed. Prior to two thousand nineteen, Optimum would have covered the expenses for this, as they did the county channel. But in two thousand nineteen, federal all changed. And they can provide you with channel space at no charge, but they can't charge you for the initial setup on the technical side. And that would be for any municipality or any county in the state of West Virginia. They would be charged that, that sum of money for the technical connection for the channel, as long as the channel, you know, as I mentioned, they can provide up to three channel allotments for you. With even one that the program that they can charge the municipality or local county, franchise authority, cable, franchise authority, the initial construction cost to put that channel on. So that's something new, it's come about since two thousand nineteen. But it's nothing unique or going for the city of Oak Hill. If this would be Beckley or Princeton or Bluefield would have it, this would be the same, same across the board. They would have to charge the construction costs to the municipality.
We just did it for Buchanan a few months ago, the same, same exact situation.
So we're, we're asked to approve the worst case scenario at twelve thousand bucks, and we don't, we can't get an answer for the best case scenario is.
I, as of tonight, yes.
So how long would that take to get the best case scenario?
That's a matter of our construction guys coming out and running that, and I think, you know, that's probably, you know, within fifteen to thirty days, we could probably have an answer to that, have to audit.
Is that a ill killer, Mr. McGuffin, is we were, it, it's just been my experience that if when you deal with anybody, and I'm not, I'm not bad mountain optimum at all, but when you deal with anybody, say, yeah, I'll pay up to twelve thousand dollars, but it might be cheaper. Well, I was in the paying our price.
It, it's not going to be a whole lot, it, it's not going to be a whole lot cheaper than that, and, and for one reason, Mr. Miller, approximately half of that, well, maybe not quite half of that cost, maybe forty percent of that cost is in that equipment that we have to install at the production side, no matter what.
Okay.
And it, and that's once this is purchased and installed as an asset of the city, it'll be here permanently. Regardless if I'm the administrator or whomever, it is the city's, and if something would happen to me, the channel, channel could continue on without my presence. So this will be definitely an asset of the city. That's why I'm having it installed here and not on private property. Because, you know, I want to see this continue on for long term. But, you know, this is investment, as far as the city's concerned, it's an investment for a city asset. And it's, it's, that's, that's what I want to make clear. That's kind of what happened with the county channel, it originated on private property, that individual passed away. There was no way to transfer the availability to be the administrator of that channel. I want to prevent it. So, yeah, that's, that's what I want to make clear, the twelve thousand dollars, this is an asset of the city of Oak Hill that could be utilized for many years.
So this provides, we're looking at this for the, you know, the cable channel and all that to get our everything we want locally back on TV for all the citizens, which I like. Does this, will this also allow us for internet? We use internet through here, is this just for cable? Through the City Hall, but for the internet?
No, this is, this is just to, the purpose of this build would be only to transmit whatever production that, that you all choose to produce from the facility to the head end for broadcast. There's no, there's no general internet connectivity that's part of, part.
And this, and this setup is unique in the aspect that other municipalities do have government access channels, but they're all done remotely, the equipment's located at the head end. This will be a unique situation for the city of Oak Hill where the equipment is located on a local level, can be maintained on a local level. Before, you know, the purpose of me on the technical side makes it a lot easier. I just can't drive to the head end in Raleigh County and have access anytime I'll wish. I just can't drive to the head end in Raleigh County and have access anytime I wish. I mean, if it, if something would break or something technical would happen, the channel would all be there. It may be a year or two or over the weekend before I can get it repaired. With here, if it's located on city property, it can be, you know, repaired within, takes me about five minutes to drive here. So that's a unique opportunity for the city to have this equipment located on city property. Cause really no other municipalities in this area have that availability. City of Beckley has a channel, but the equipment's located at, uh, the head end in Raleigh County. So they don't have access directly to their equipment on a regular basis. So I just wanted, you know, say this is unique in them offering this opportunity to the city. Not very many city halls have a fiber connection to Optimum. And the, the elaborate on internet, Optimum, to my knowledge, doesn't have fiber connections directly to their customers in this area as of yet. So it'd just be for the sole purpose of placing the channel on air and getting the video signal from Oak Hill to Raleigh County to the head end.
From start to finish, how long would it take to get this installed, worst case scenario?
Yeah, I think we would hope the 60 to 90 days, but that would, but I'd say that subject to confirmation by our construction lead, who, yeah, it's like, uh, surgery. And, oh, and, and getting the necessary parts. Um, that's a, that's oftentimes an issue that we have too, is ordering some of this equipment, getting it in. We're, we're kind of the mercy of the manufacturers, uh, on that, on that end.
Darren, should be the one, you'll be doing the programming?
Correct. Correct, as far as anything else besides the two pieces of equipment on each end of the fiber and the fiber, I provide all that. So I look at it as a partnership with the city of Oak Hill because the production cost, the equipment to produce the content isn't gonna cost the city anything. And you're getting your city council meetings going for no charge. So this, you know, like I said, I look at it as a partnership, but the fiber is the one thing I can't provide on my own that requires initial investment by the city. And like I said, it's, once it's installed, it's there permanently. And it can be used for years and years and years. And that's, that's key, cause I wouldn't have the cable, I wouldn't have that fiber originated anywhere else but on, on public property, given what's happened in the last year where we lost access to community events on TV because that originated on private property. So this is, this is to prevent that from happening in the future.
Thank you, gentlemen. Darren, would we be able to raise you for another?
Well, that's, that's one thing, elaborating on the previous meeting, there was terms that I laid out as far as the channel. It was kind of to prevent some of the issues that took, uh, place in the past with our local channel from happening again. And as you, if you go back and look at the previous meeting, um, it's up for renewal on an annual basis. The, the administrator position of the channel is up for renewal on a, an annual basis. So you have the opportunity to review the performance of myself, the content of the channel, whether or not you're pleased with it or displeased with it. So that's, that's the important thing, you know, you have discretion when it comes to this channel. And that's what I wanted to kind of put in place because, uh, with our previous local channel, they're, the governing body didn't really even know that they were in charge of it. They had discretion to say, okay, yeah, need to do a better job or, you know, what have you. So there's no real need for a lease as long as it, as it's in writing, going back to the last meeting and what was laid out to where it's renewed on an annual basis. So I'm not looking for financial compensation from the city directly for, for this channel. The bad answer is your question.
It does.
As long, as long as the city's willing to put the bill for the construction costs of the fiber, I can provide everything else. So I don't want this to cost you, cost the city any more money than you actually have to spend. I mean, and, you know, I've never been the one to approach the government body of any kind and ask for anything. But in this case, I didn't have much choice. So as I mentioned, the law's changed in 2019. Prior to that, Optimum would have covered it, as I get across the street for our county channel. But they can charge it back to the local governing body. There's nothing unique, they're doing different here in the city of Oak Hill. But as I mentioned, I can provide the fiber connection, I can provide everything else. Uh, as you're getting all the equipment to put the channel on, you're getting your city council meetings going for no charge. So it's, and you're getting community events bound on. There's lots of people that have approached me in the last month or two after hearing what took place at the previous meeting. Yeah, yeah, I was saying, that's a great idea, that they want their programming back on cable. And so there's definitely a demand for it. It's just getting all the pieces put in place and that fiber is crucial. Because you have a unique oppor- opportunity to have that originated right here at City Hall. Once it's originated here at City Hall, you can put, you know, content from wherever you want one. So, um, I operate the channel in Redbar County, I've been in Bluesburg. Our mechanism to place live content on that channel is second to none. Um, Optimum, they're perfectly aware of the job I do up here, and that's why they're here tonight. They're really pleased with the content we're getting, the live content, the reliability of the channel. It's probably 98 to 99% reliable, there it is off there. And that's what I wanna emulate here in fact, you know, especially in Oak Hill. I want you guys to have access to this type of technology that other municipalities have. And it's been really successful in Bluesburg. It went from a non-functioning channel three years ago to people asking, why are we not covering the community events? And I want that here. Because there's lots of things going on here locally that people need to know about. And not everybody gets their media full on. There's still an older generation that turn on the TV to watch a parade or a city council meeting or what have you that really enjoyed it in the past, that haven't had it here recently. So that's something to remember, there's still people that rely on that to get information.
So what is the advantage, you said, of having that here versus doing it remotely? Like you said, some municipalities do it remotely, can you clear that up for me again?
The availability for fiber, a fiber connection isn't there for every municipality. We're fortunate to have the fiber lines, you know, a little bit of liquidity proximity here in City Hall. And when I'm delivering the channel, um, it makes it a lot easier to maintain the channel. Something goes wrong, I'm gonna get sent five minutes away. If something goes wrong over in, in Harper Heights and Raleigh County, it could be, look at heavens on the front, you're gonna be giving Monday morning before I get access to it. So, and, and also, as I mentioned, if something would take place where I could no longer be the administrator of the channel, the health related, what have you, the equipment's here, you can connect into a channel that can continue on without my presence. And that's, that's the sole reason that I want it here, not over in Harper Heights or in product location. Just to prevent some of the things that happened in the last year.
Local events meeting that will be on there, just for clarify if somebody's wondering, city council meetings, your parade, your, with like your high school sports activities, could they be on there to?
I was, I was kinda hoping to have those appointments for graduation here at Third Day, which I'll be at broadcasting, but anything local of, of interest will be on the channel. And, and main thing is to get government meetings back on this channel. Because that's something that hasn't been in, I don't think there's been a government meeting broadcast in its entirety since I was in the wood education. That's been a while. So, and that's, that's key for people to have access to information. Last question about what the guys on here in City Hall, not look allowed to be able to get your TV on and watch. And, you know, for example, when you have the Bluesburg, uh, with the city council meeting on a loop where it's played for a week duration, so people have an opportunity to see it. There's not full play on a nine o'clock on a Sunday night, this will play the entire week. So as I mentioned, this is your channel.
Three channels, right? We have three.
We have up to three. The first one is gonna be the government access channel. Uh, local access, all river rental, you have to run a public facility for the community to use where they can generate content. And there's also an education access channel. If you still feel fit, you could actually create a channel for local schools. So that's what people, you're, you're going to do so. Uh, with local access, um, it can be quite expensive, you're talking hundreds of, hundreds of thousands of dollars to put a publicly accessible facility in to produce content. Uh, the nearest municipality that has one would be Somerville. Uh, Somerville, NBC TV, SCTV, they, uh, local access. Uh, and then new ride facility for the public. But you have to, the cameras, production equipment, and you're getting the general public in, create content. And you have to basically have a full-time employee to, on the channel. With the government access, someone has to have a publicly accessible facility, and you don't have to have a full-time employee operating the channel. So it's much more expensive to do so.
So in your absence, someone here would be like the administrator and could do just what you were doing?
Yeah, the equipment will be right downstairs in the base. So you could designate an individual here, uh, this, this employee by the city to wire the equipment to, uh, for the availabilities of the young to operate. So that's, that's perfectly acceptable. And I'm, I'm all about education, I love informing people. The more you know, the better off you are, because that's what they got for, for areas. Not a whole lot of people informed, you know, about actually what's taking place. So this is, you know, very transparent process as far as creating this channel. Yeah, letting you know, yeah, it's your channel. Yeah, this channel needs to be publicly accessible as far as the technical side of it. Uh, that, that way we prevent issues from, um, happening that have taken place in the past year. Cause we lost the county channel because it was, it was a mismanagement, there were a lot of missupporting, cost of issues.
Any other questions for Mr. McGuffin? Darren, thank you.
I have one for this city manager. Demetri, do you have any reservations as that city manager, his arrangement as far as space in City Hall or any reservations that you may have? I'm glad we have an adequate City Hall.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our, yes, is, can you action on this?
Cause, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, issue a purchase order. Make sure I don't get this right, I'm, issue a purchase order, that's what you said in agreement with Optimum? And have Mr. McGuffin from New River Network work with him as far as the location in the, in the building and, and to get the fiber optic here so that we can get a, uh, local access channel back.
I'll second that.
All right, motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil, thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
I know that this broadcasting one didn't.
It's a lot of work.
Yes. All right, now we'll move on to our update on procedures for selling the former BBNT building. Allison, would it be you?
That would be Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Johnson.
Okay, so I talked with John Stott today, and he said that need to have a joint meeting with the building commission to assess their interest in selling billing. Um, and, I mean, we can tell them, the council can tell them how they want it to be. And, but they are the ones that get to decide. Also, um, I think at the last meeting you all decided, or the last time we talked about it, that you wanted to have an auction. So they don't have to have an auction because they're not a public body like we are. But, um, if, you know, if, if council says that's what they want to do, then they can, well, that's what they'll agree to do. Uh, and then they have to pick an auctioneer to have it. So there are some companies out there that does the auctions. And, um, there'll have to be a resolution from council either to auction or sell the building, and then the building commission has to do the same thing. Each, a body has to do an auction. And that we have to have, we have to disclose the issues that we have with the building. So we can tell them that, you know, it's gonna be sold as is, but we have to disclose what's wrong with it. And I think we have that somewhere, uh, Chapman or someone who faces those things, so. But the first thing is to have a joint meeting with the building commission. So I need some dates so that I can contact the building. Some dates that you all are available. And we don't.
How many members are there in the mission?
There's five.
If they say, if we meet with them and they say no, then?
Then I give the wait till, uh, to see who's, so terms are up. The thing you can do, but it, it puts the bank in a bad decision is we can terminate the lease with the building commission. They're responsible for making the payments. But that also puts us in bad, bad light with the bank.
Could that affect our, our bond rating?
Probably. So in, in June, our meeting appears on the channel. Maybe try to have something next week if you all can do that. No, we can't sleep. Or the week after, it's a holiday.
What about May 20? It's 29th of May.
That's 28th. What about the 29th?
Are you here all this?
The 30th.
Are you here all this week?
I'm here all this week, yes.
Can we not do that on June 3rd?
I'm sorry, it's not June 3rd. On vacation, but I'll make you. And yeah, been here 47 years. Okay, so I'll contact, um, the building commission, is that at 6 o'clock? So later on, please.
Sounds good.
Is that a public meeting?
Yes. Who's on the building commission? Um, Marilyn Flant, Phil Laird, David Stewart, Nick Campbell, Wes Luton.
So the process, you said, like we'd have, what's wrong with the building?
You have to do that.
Can we just put, I've been ready?
Yes, that's required when you show it on the state.
The, uh, the appraisal that was $455,000 has, I believe, some deficiencies listed, I believe.
Any other questions, folks? Moving on to number three, discussion and possible decision on the use of the Oak Hill Center tons.
We spoke last council meeting about the use of those Oak Hill tons, quite a bit of discussion about. I've come to not to request that, uh, we spend part of that, uh, as it stipulates with that agreement for the use of those. We've checked into it, spoke last month about, uh, a pretty extensive camera system. Uh, Beckley's utilizing this system, Somerville's utilizing, like last toll from Beckley was over 50 primes. Had been solved in Beckley and Raleigh Counties. Homicides, I believe, for the county, as a matter of fact, were involved in that. Uh, got quotes from the same company, um, for thirty camera system. Some of those cameras will be placed, uh, in more public safety areas, uh, parks. They have three parks that don't have any cameras. Those will be utilized there. Our, our high-traffic, uh, intersections. We'll utilize those spots. We'll have a couple of them that are mobile. Uh, as long as we can get power to them, or there's actually a power supply we could purchase if we can't, uh, we, oh, these are all cellular-based cameras. Like I say, Beckley is very well pleased with them. Somerville is also. I think Beckley's only got about twenty operational right now, looking to do more. Somerville's got, I think, about thirty. Very good results. I've watched, uh, the presentations about them. These are sole sourced. Those who know what that means is that there's no other company that can provide this technology that, uh, this system provides for us. So it's sole sourced, don't have to bet it out. That, uh, it's a five-year contract or a five-year deal on the cameras for replacements and everything except the cell phone service. Uh, not all of them will be, have to be cell phone. If we can hardwire them into locations that have, uh, internet, then you don't have to have the cell service. I don't really know how many is going to take cell service. But that, uh, proposal that, the end that I've got is ninety-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. That's for the next five years on a thirty-camera system. We've went to and pretty confident that will cover the areas, plus give us a couple mobile units to put up different places. I request that we use some of that opioid money, and that's not two seventy. Two seventy, as we discussed last month, has to be used for law enforcement or reimbursement that we've already spent on law enforcement, or it can be used on the treatment, education, and prevention. Those are the things that can be used for. I'm asking for ninety-one thousand of it to do that system. But I think it'll be tremendous in drug work, criminal work, in public safety. Also request that we use additional funds of that for, uh, a new drone for the police department. We've run into, we, we have one drone at the city that's being utilized by Tyler and, and what he does with it was trying to keep it on hand in a cruiser at least eight hours a day. Potentially more if we get more people trained in it. Uh, that has become a very useful tool for us. Just utilized it in a pretty good-sized drug investigation in town by the task force members. Very beneficial. We, we, we use it quite a bit. The drone, we have a price for a duplicate drone that we've got, plus some additional equipment, uh, that we don't have, but we may be looking at other another drone other than that. But Tyler and I both feel confident that twenty thousand dollars will cover whatever we do. Uh, the bid that Tyler got is sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. But I think he feels pretty confident that twenty thousand dollars will, we won't go over that if we look at a different program. But I request, like I say, the ninety-one thousand for the camera system and the twenty, up to twenty thousand dollars for the drone. Again, that's not even half of that opioid money that.
You had a situation that's about two, um, with an R robbery that.
Kind of R robbery out in town.
Sharing the GIS, sharing the drone with the GIS department.
By sharing it, it was staying up here, um, locked up, secure. The officer, the drone operator, the officer had to drive here and then back out to East Main Street. Which, which caused, you know, probably fifteen minutes inside. Actually, he ran code here. And then ran code back to the location, which is hate seeing him run code. Period, but it was that important. But, you know, we utilized a drone that day and the, one of the K nine units. And that subject was in custody within an hour and forty-five minutes. All that meshed together turned up everybody.
Please, do we need a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion because that's what the money's for. And we need those cameras. Um, I didn't realize none of, none of the three parts have cameras.
The city park does have. Collins Park does not. There's one, not very good on the Dog Park. Needles Eye Park does not. Harlem Heights Park does not.
Would some of these be also put on Main Street here too?
They'll be at the, they'll be at intersections. We've kind of mapped that out. Tyler's kind of helped us, uh, where we've mapped it initially. But we'll, we'll.
Chief, you said you had some that are mobile, like if we, you wanted to, extra on the weekend, you know, up here for when Oakleaf is.
Beckley, matter of fact, uh, to, to set this all off when they first started, they mobilized all theirs onto the chili cook-off, if I'm not mistaken. It has the capabilities at that chili cook-off or any event that we have, we could allow public access. We can allow you all access. Or, you know, and we can define that access. It is, it's a pretty amazing system, well above what I can explain it can do.
I wasn't, because I'm in agreement with her, uh, you know, you know, I kind of second her motion already, but I just thought that those would be pertinent for, you know, we can find those. I guess, you know, the cameras would actually be for that, I believe.
You know, they showed me, Beckley's been over a couple times to the office and showed me some of the stuff that they've done with theirs and it's, it's state of the art.
Also, that helps a little, a lot of labor too from you guys chasing them cameras.
When you can dial something in on a camera and get, uh, a suspect or a suspect vehicle, yeah. Eventually, your, your man irs are, you're cutting your manners.
I second the motion.
Okay, um, before you continue, would you like to amend your motion to incorporate the drone?
Yes. Yes.
All right, motion been popped on, move the second. That the chief's department accepted that there would be ninety-one thousand dollars earmarked for cameras and twenty thousand earmarked for drone. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Beckley's got their, uh, non-uniformed officers installing those, so I'm looking forward to seeing you on the ladder.
I'll be holding the ladder. I'll be the anchor.
All right, we're moving on to the new business. Four, act upon recommendation of the planning commission to allow a land classification change from R two residential district to B two general business district at eighteen hundred Main Street.
This is the place that's out behind New to You, right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, that, cause that's already a B two in the front of that, right?
The New to You, the Simon's store, the Wyche's, the Simon's store is.
B two.
B two. That's right behind it, in, in the one acre lot in behind that. There's dealing with those two portions there.
That is, should have been B two all along.
Yeah.
And actually.
Understand why half of the building was B two and the other.
Actually, uh, we, we were looking at it as part of this, where this, everything's so messed up on the zoning and all in there to look at further into. Is that whole rest of the street up through there should be B two. So that's just bringing that up to conformity with what's already there and moving it on up like it should have been all along.
This is the recommendation of the.
The planning commission, yeah. Been recommended to change that into B two.
Any questions, folks? That will be the motion.
I make a motion to change that, uh, B two, uh, general district, uh, eighteen hundred East Main Street.
I second the motion. This has been properly moved and seconded, general business, business district at eighteen hundred Main Street be reclassified as B two. All those in favor? Uh, all opposed? Motion carried. Number five. Motion number five. We're going to have to go on a res, a recommendation of the planning commission to amend the land use table by adding section fifteen thirty-eight, four seventy, smoke shop, vape shop, and tobacco store to the city of Oak Hill supplemental information and corresponding definitions to fifteen for ten in terms.
Some documents. Land use table, I think, first. I don't think it's highlighted, but it's helping. And it's under smoke. Yeah, I was thinking that maybe we should have vape shop or either smoke shop C vape shop or vape shop C smoke shop. I'll take it on some of them. So this has the smoke shop, vape shop, or tobacco store permitted in B one, B two, B three. And then in some definitions, I think it's the that need added as, um, electronic cigarette and vape, smoke shop. So on here, it's under vape and in the table, it's not. So I think we can just put both of those in there and fix that, if that's okay with you all. So then it'll be the same thing. But we're not encouraging.
No, no, this is actually, the recommendation is, there was nothing in there that really spelled out vape shops or smoke shops, and that's to put language in there to identify those. I don't remember what the distance was off the top of my head, forgive me, but it was to actually make it stricter to where you couldn't, they have to be so far apart and all, you couldn't just stack them all up along Main Street. It prevents that from, prevents that from happening.
So that fifteen hundred feet of an existing smoke shop.
Or a daycare center, school, or park, or recreation area.
Okay.
And then it tells how it will be measured and about the people that are, are not in compliance now, that they become a non-conforming use.
A lot of the other municipalities around the state are, some of them already have this, and we kind of looked at some of their ordinances and things that they have, and some municipalities do not yet, but are moving in this direction and try to regulate it because it is popping up everywhere and it's not.
So this is going to eliminate them from being across the street from each other and everything else, because, I mean, right now, we're just, we're buried with these things.
And also in the definitions, I think it says thirty-three percent, if they sell at least. It's thirty-three percent.
What is that now?
Um, in the definition part of the quote.
Oh, I mean, the other page?
Yeah, it was in that. No, the turn where it says that one, yeah.
Yep.
A retailer service establishment that devotes at least thirty-three percent of its floor to the sale and display of electronic cigarettes, tobacco products, and/or allows them being on-site. And if they advertise themselves as a, a vape store or an electronic retail establishment. So that's how they're defined. So you may have a gas station or convenience store that sells those products, but it's just a small part of their store. They're not considered a vape shop.
Renate motion?
Uh, well, I make a motion that we accept, uh, what the, uh, zoning has created for the, uh, fifteen thirty-eight forty smoke vape shop and tobacco store and, uh, corresponding definitions to the fifteen point oh four.
I'll second.
This is the first reading. We'll have one more read.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the planning commission's recommendations be accepted. All those in favor?
Wait a minute. Um, I want to talk, it's going to take a couple of minutes because I don't want to send a mi, mixed message. I believe. I'm sorry.
Don't be rude.
The, the reason this is before us, I believe, is that there's a concern in Fayette County, probably other counties, of underage vaping. And I want, I want to say upfront that count me in. I do not want any of our underage, underage citizens vaping. It's against the law, number one. It's very harmful for them. Um, I'm dead opposed to that. And we were also privy to some surveys that have been conducted about how many kids are vaping. It was talking to me. And obviously, every one of those cases where a juvenile was vaping represented at least one person breaking the law. Every one of those. And here we are considering another law. And if I devote less than thirty-three percent of my floor space, the law doesn't even apply. And I don't, I, you know, if I was smart, I wouldn't say anything about it. I'd just go ahead and vote for it, but I look at ordinances, if they are enforceable, if they are needed, logical and all that. I don't see that with this ordinance. It's a, it's a large amount of bureaucracy, um, and if you take fifteen hundred feet from schools, uh, I can't remember what all this, daycare's parks. That pretty well eliminates all of the city of Oak Hill. It's going to be hard to squeeze one in. Which I, trust me, I don't care if there's another vape shop in Oak Hill, but, uh, I don't think that trying to legislate morality, it's, it, it doesn't work. And besides that, I can, I can put in like the example to me to use the convenience store anywhere I want. I don't have to abide by this law if I only dedicate thirty-three percent of my floor space to vaping materials. So, so I'm opposed to it. I, I don't think it's good legislation. And, but I want to reiterate, I am dead opposed to any juvenile be provided vaping material and them vaping. Admittedly opposed to that. But I don't think another law does any good if, if the current laws are not being adopted by.
Who's going to monitor that?
Who's going to monitor what?
When we get to see the action. Well, they'll have to have a, now that sort of feels permitted in those, so they don't have to have special use. That should say conditional. That land use table, didn't it say permitted?
It said permitted.
It should be, that should also be conditional. We'll have that fixed. Uh.
But to answer, is, for a new one coming in, that would be the uh. Who's owning office. Ultimately responsible for that.
Sure, and that then, you know, we'll have to tell the people that issue license that they have to watch for that also.
So would you like to table it and make the amendments or make the changes or you want to?
I don't know, I, I'm gonna ask Bill, uh, Bill, do you think that maybe some of the wording may need to be different or just not, uh? Because I'm just asking. Cause now you've got me thinking, maybe I want to resend here. Uh, I'm just asking, do you think that there may be some different wording we may be able to use or something in that, or? Or, I mean, I, I'm just asking. I don't know. Cause I, I agree with what you're saying.
Well, I, well, I, I mean, I, when I saw the thirty-three percent of the floor space.
Yeah.
That takes the teeth out of it, I, I just have to get a big enough place and sell enough.
Yeah.
Of something else to, to be able to locate close to a school.
Yeah.
Uh. And, and, and I don't, I don't know, my, my real issue is. It's against the law right now.
Yeah.
Juvenile vape, and we had. Evidence presented to us through a survey that, that a lot of kids are vaping, so let's, you know, let's at least. Enforce the laws. That are currently on the books. And, and how, and hold.
Yeah.
Whether it's parents or. Whoever is providing or selling to juveniles, let's hold them responsible, and it's, it's a very, it should be a. Very serious offense, I don't know if it is or not, I.
I don't know, is, is that a?
Yeah, it should, it, it'd fall under the same parameters as providing alcohol to a minor, you know? Or, or anything else that's illegal. Uh, yeah, it's an arrestable offense. Uh, probably. Punishable by fine and, and prison.
Okay.
Doesn't the tobacco? People, aren't they the ones that check that, like, they send in people?
Should be.
You are not doing that.
Should be, yes. Yeah. I mean, we go along with them because we actually issue the citations usually, but they're the ones that come in and enforce it.
How often do you participate in that?
On a tobacco one? Probably within the last year we've done alcohol. Uh, I, I, I would have to check.
What about vaping?
Uh, again, I'd have to check. And, and also, I. I would assume, I don't know, but I would assume that if I'm a. If I'm underage and I possess. An iconic cigarette, that. I'm in violation of laws of juvenile.
Right.
As well, and so. You know, I'm not sure if we're, we're attacking the problem legally. That we already have the authority to do. But, but here we are passing another law.
I was just wondering, Bill, is, is another vape store really what we want in Oak Hill?
Uh, that's one thing, I don't either, I don't.
No, and I think the, the reason for sitting in on some of this, and Mr. Love, I wish he was here to answer some of these. Um, for the planning commission was talking was that when we were presented that, I think those people recommended. That we put some things in there, the ones that gave the survey. Thing they recommend, because we didn't have anything in there that really spelled out. That much about vape shops and stuff, so that. And there was nothing in the land use table about it, so I think that was the direction that, that was the reason. While there may be some loopholes or something there that, you know, may need sewn up, that was the reason for this, for the. To try to get something in the books there that addressed it, and I think they had recommended that we do that.
It just keeps them from at least being so close together.
Cause they're, they're, I remember her. Saying that. If it's vis- visible and it's there, it makes it easier access than if, if you limit them and it doesn't. Lit up in the neon green, it.
It's what they said.
Curls the use of it is what they were saying.
The vape shops can, they can do all that stuff. But. A convenience store is not going to do that, they're not gonna. Be flashing that they have vape, I mean, that was.
I mean, the numbers, the numbers presented us through their surveys. Were pretty bad.
Yeah, yes.
They were horrible. Um. So, and, and obviously, I want to improve those numbers, but I, I think this is. Too good legislation. I, I think it, it lip service too.
May I provide the other side of that? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, only, only because I did help uh, with the, with the planning commission on some, or I'm sorry, I'm the planning commission with the uh, Fayetteville Coalition. Uh, I helped them, or I was educated. From them through that process, essentially the reason the vape shops specifically. Uh, were targeted in this, and Mr. Hannah Bash, you're a hundred percent spot on, they can get it from a gas station, they can still get it from their parents, um, you're, you're one hundred percent spot on there. Uh, the reality of the vape stores themselves is. The vape stores, these places that are selling, uh, whose floor space is thirty-three percent or greater. Um, vapor products specifically, that's not all they're selling. They're selling Delta nine, they're selling other variables of THC, they're selling Neptune's, I have no idea what it is. That causes, that's caused uh, psychosis. In teenagers, they're not just selling vape products, that's gotta be thirty-three percent or greater. Uh, if you go to a gas station, for example, they're not going to be selling those products. Um, but the vape stores are, and they're selling a lot of them, and the newest and latest and greatest that, you're right, you absolutely cannot just like. You can't just legislate them away, uh, because new stuff, new synthetic chemicals are popping up constantly. They come through the vape stores, and that's how they get into our communities. Uh, so the vape stores specifically were being targeted. Uh, with this legislation, or with this, with this ordinance, I guess. Because of not only the vapor products and the issues that those have. But the places that are selling thirty-three percent or greater of vape products are also selling all these other things. And those are winding up in our kids' hands, and they're not selling those, or they're not near as prevalent at gas stations. Um, also, the people who we're seeing are the uh, the businesses that are coming in. Uh, for vape shops, like any business, right, there's a good vape shop owner and a bad vape shop owner, right, just like, you know, and speaking from the development side. We want to see business grow in Oak Hill. Uh, when you see a store come in and all their employees are not locals, that's a heads up. You, that, that's beyond field good legislation, that's something that is a gigantic red flag to our community. When a business comes in and you don't know any of those hourly employees because they're not community members. It's something to be aware of, and that is prevalent within this vape industry specifically. Uh, so while I absolutely do respect where you're coming from, um. My educator, what I've learned through the Fayetteville Coalition is that there's more important reasons that vape shops specifically uh, should be acted on.
Well, uh, and I'll, I'll say this, and I'll be quite, I've talked enough, but I, you know, I'll support this, I, I, I plan to vote for it in a moment, uh. But I, I do urge that our current laws be in. And that it's a very serious matter. When a juvenile is caught with vaping material by. School personnel or whoever catches them, that it's not just. Added to the survey, that, that we do something about it, that that's a serious offense, it's as serious as me. Handing up. Alcoholic beverage to a kid. And that we treat it that way.
Yeah, uh, Mike, is that something that you would have to initiate, I mean, for ATF to come in and do some of those? At these vape shops?
I'm sure I can put in a request to them, uh.
I mean, I agree with Hannah Bass, I mean.
Yeah.
I, I didn't know.
Their. What kind of manpower they have and, and what kind of response you get from them, I'm not sure. We usually rely on them to contact us and say, hey, we're coming. And I would take that, that they do that with their availability of manpower and doing it to. How many agents or whatever they have. Because they even bring their own underage person with them, so that we don't have to utilize. The neighborhood kid.
Can the teachers at the school? Call the police department if they have, if they have somebody that they catch?
Right? I'm not sure, uh. What step that is in their process of. Dealing with the children, uh, I don't know if it's expulsion, if it's. It's a, you know, two-day suspension or whatever it is. Uh, be a good question for the. Pro officer.
Imagine, if that's where most of it's happening.
I, I mean, they, they got a resource.
It's gonna have to go to, it's gonna have to go through the prosecutor's office, because all juvenile petitions have to go through the prosecutor's office. And, and, and they're as overwhelmed and understaffed as anybody, I'm sure. And, and are they gonna uh, deal with twenty uh? Kids possessing.
How about might scare?
Uh, it might. But that's something I can check into as far. If, if they will come in more often, or if we can. Go at it on our own, you know, I don't have a problem doing that, but. Thank you, lately it's been initiated by. By the state.
So basically, any new business coming into the city, that's what that, to it.
Is there within fifteen hundred?
And it has been moved, thank you, it has been moved and seconded, this is the first reading that the. Planning commission's recommendation be accepted, all those in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Motion is carried, number six, police hiring.
We're not, no. Just table that until next month, we're not.
This will be tabled till next month.
I hope we would be, but we're.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, Julie. Can I go back just one second on number five, did we need to change the language on something?
Yeah, and that'll, we can make, we can make minor things, additions on the second reading, so on the second reading, we'll have those, I'll have that land use table.
All right, do we have any reports? Allison, do you have anything for us?
I'm happy to uh, talk about my economic development, thanks for your support.
John, do you have any big voices?
I submitted mine.
Thank you. You love us.
I have to bring my brain with me. If I'm brief, I'm skipping syllables. All right, well, ladies and gentlemen, uh, we've been pretty busy in economic development, um. A couple of significant community events we've got coming up soon, uh, development related. Uh, one's gonna be Build the Hills uh, Community Champions Meeting, this is gonna be May thirty-first, eleven-thirty in the morning. Uh, everybody here is invited to that, so essentially, this is a. Good news Fayette County event for Oak Hill specifically. Uh, our intention is to invite all of our committees, civic organizations, nonprofits. Uh, that operate within Oak Hill to come together, we've got funding uh, through the West Virginia Community Development Hub. For about the first forty participants that sign up to have a free box lunch that's coming at you from, that's being made by one of our Oak Hill businesses. Uh, and our intention is to let all of our organizations that function within Oak Hill kind of get together, talk about what we've got going on. And break down some of the silos, for example, you know, with the beautification committee, I don't know what the memorial committee's up to, who has no idea about all the great stuff that Josh has going on in Parks and Recreation. Uh, or that the Methodist Church is working on, this is our, kind of our good news uh, Oak Hill event, where we're working on breaking down our silos between all of our different groups to operate. So that we can learn how we can work together a little bit better and share resources. And also create a way for volunteers to easily plug in and. Lend their hand or their services, however they would like to, so it's an easy way for our community members to get involved also in the community. Um, we'll make sure that's clear. That's uh, May thirty-first at eleven-thirty in the morning, I've got a meeting with those, uh, with the West Virginia Community Development Hub and our Build the Hill team. Tomorrow, we should be finalizing some of the details, and uh, you guys will get your invitations as we get all the details finalized.
Where's the meeting being held?
Uh, thank you, it's gonna be at the Lewis Community Center. That's eleven-thirty in the morning on May thirty-first. And it's kind of an important update or detail. And definitely the more the merrier for that, and uh, it won't go over ninety minutes.
I'll be there.
All right, and another one, this is uh, our Oak Hill Business Owners Association, still going strong, uh, and we are continually gaining members, uh, learning more about the services. That we as a business owners association can provide for our other business owners. Uh, we have our June social is going to be on June sixth. And it's going to be from six o'clock to eight o'clock PM at Mandabees Eatery, which is located inside, inside the studio. That's at three eleven East Main Street, so that's a new business that's opening up in Oak Hill, it was the old Hatcher's Music Building. So uh, as they're opening up, the first thing we're gonna do is the Business Owners Association is. Show up and learn about their business and buy a bunch of stuff from them, sounds like fun, so we're not asking for anything for free. Um, we, we're all going to be able to, we're all gonna meet there, and that's uh, any business community member in Oak Hill is welcome. And of course, mayor, council, uh, you guys are more than welcome, we'd love to have you there. Uh, other things we've got going on in the development world, uh, our comprehensive plan update. So what we have done within the last few months, um, the. Fayette County Commission has some funding, I want to say it was four point two million dollars, I believe, of funding that they had earmarked. For one project uh, for broadband on the other side of the river that fell through, so now all of a sudden, the. County Commission has this money that they've got to um, have allocated by, I believe, August is the deadline. So what the commission did that we thought was pretty awesome was they held different workshops with the municipalities. To uh, help us understand how we might be able to access some of that funding and what we could apply for. Uh, one of the things, our, our number one ask for the city of Oak Hill was an additional hundred fifty thousand dollars. To be put towards our comprehensive plan. Uh, package, for lack of a better word, so what we're going for here is. Uh, the comprehensive plan, also a strategic plan, which is, you know, your comprehensive plan is your ten thousand mile view. And then the strategic plan is your. Two thousand foot, or two thousand mile above view, so it's, you know, essentially you take your broad ideas that the community agrees on, on the comprehensive plan. And then you narrow it down to actual items with dates and times and procedures to make it happen, um. And then also, we were looking at a um. Uh. A capital, a capital plan as well, so that like, once we identify what it is that we would like to do, or what our community wants to do. Uh, how they want to move forward, we also learn how to fund that properly, well, we make the plans as a city, they help us. Uh, make sure that we've got the mechanisms in place so that. It's not pie in the sky, we can actually fund the thing, uh, as that becomes available, so that was, uh, we asked for a hundred fifty thousand dollars for that. Uh, so we went back to our three identified um. Companies that we would like to use as consultants and asked for a more robust plan. So those we should have, we've got two of the three in now, we should have the third one in uh, next week. And then we'll be presenting those to the planning commission. At their next meeting, and we should at that time also know officially uh, whether we received a hundred fifty thousand dollars from the county commission. So that um, that for us and for the city is, I mean, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for moving the city forward, I'm, I'm. Really proud of everybody involved in that one. Uh, also, you'll see on your, your um. Report from me, there's a rimfire trail system update, so an actual update does exist. And it has real information in it, so I, I feel like that's significant progress in the last couple of years. Um. And you're welcome to read that in my report, you know, where they are right now in the process, uh, the landowners within Fayette County have been identified. This is a one hundred mile trail system that's being proposed in Fayette County. Uh, there are a couple of major landowners where uh. Where the trail's being built or is proposed to be being built. So maps get drawn, the next step of the process is, those maps have been submitted to the landowners, the landowners. The landowners will take a look at those maps and, uh, those landowners are going to have other people that they, they're leasing property from in these areas. So then they take the maps, they give it to all those folks, and those folks say, well, you know, this is a mine access road. There's going to be big trucks. That's dangerous. Let's move this trail in this direction and on and on until we can narrow down where these ATV trails are going to go. Uh, once that happens, then it's time to, uh, designate a trailhead, search for a trailhead. So we, as the city of Oak Hill, um, have offered our hand in helping when it comes to identifying potential trailheads. Uh, we learned from them what they look for in the trailheads, those kind of things. So that we are partnering with the rimfire system and we're assisting them in this process. But now we, we can't get super excited about trailheads yet because we don't know exactly where the trails are going to be yet. So we have to make sure that's official and then, then we'll help them with the trailheads. Uh, any other, I know that's been a lot of questions over that one in the last couple of years. Uh, does anybody have any questions that I can try to answer, or at least find your answers to related to the rimfire system?
I have a question.
Sir?
I just asked my sons about that meeting, you know, that building.
About the building? Oh, yeah.
He's not aware of it, so I'll try to find out more about it and send an email. Although what to do on that is, he didn't, I just now text him to find out if he knew about it.
Sure. So we, uh, we scheduled this on Friday through Amanda Boosley.
Amanda?
Yes.
She has other restaurants?
That's correct.
She is in.
And she's operating within the building.
In that spot, Sunday.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. He's not aware of that, so let him know. He, I'll text him. He said he doesn't know.
I'm sure he and Amanda will.
Probably his wife.
Probably his wife, okay.
Yeah, if their family operates like my family does, that's.
Yeah. So anyway.
Yeah, I'm happy to help them.
I don't.
Sure. But yeah, we're, we, uh, we are on the books, and if anything should change from now, I'll let you know. Um. We are working, uh, we're assessing again the Collins property, the Collins Middle School property, um, we have, I don't think there's any question in anybody's mind that. Those, uh, those buildings. Could pose a risk to person and property. And, um, there's a, a tangled web of ownership associated with those, and we are doing everything we can to work through the legal fronts of, uh, the legal aspects of that. Um. We, as the city, are working on the best way to, to approach this because that seems to be. The right answer. All right, and I do have a bank building update, so of course. This could be a total exercise in futility. Uh, however, out of respect for the council and out of respect for economic development within the city. If you've got a building that you already own, you've already, you always have to have a Plan B. So we've discussed this a few times, or I guess several times in the past, um. It does still look like the highest and best use, uh, is what we discussed the last time, which is. Uh, office space on the top, particular gallery space on the bottom, and eventual, um, classroom space for community classes on the bottom. Uh, so it's one thing to have an idea, it's another thing to have that idea funded. So what I've done between. The last time we spoke and now is I've went out to see if we could find some money to do that, um, and. Working with the rural partners network, we've identified two very promising, uh, funding sources that would fund. The first phase of that operation, if you guys decide to go that way, and that would be roughly four hundred thousand dollars. Um, funding avenues would be either the Appalachian Regional Commission, or there's another one through the Economic Development Authority. Uh, these are grants and forgivable loans. So essentially, that would, uh, that would take this project and separate it into two phases. And again, this could be a complete exercise in futility, but we've got to have a Plan B, like, you know, like you would on any building that you own. So this would, uh, the first phase in this estimate, uh, was made with the help of Chapman Engineering. Be roughly four hundred thousand dollars to do absolute, pretty much nothing to the bottom level. It would not be habitable at this point. Uh, but then convert the middle space to gallery, more open space, so not building walls, which costs you less money if you're not building walls. Uh, and use the office space upstairs as it is now, not taking down walls or adding walls. Uh, there is some, uh, some electrical considerations for the building. There's some HVAC considerations, um, some communication lines considerations. But, um, that four hundred thousand dollars would get the building occupiable. Now, you know, what, what's going to happen next, like wouldn't any business is. We've got to look through the feasibility, you know, the good thing is if, if it's a four hundred thousand dollar grant or forgivable loan, so long as we meet the parameters, um. Then that four hundred thousand, we're not, we don't have to put debt service on our balance sheet for. And if that's the case, then it could bring another use for this building into feasibility. Uh, that wouldn't have been otherwise, and it, it's the win-win-win potentially where. It is a tourist attraction, um, it serves our community, uh, and. It gets rid of this pain in the neck building that we're talking through. And, um, if any, any questions about that. And I'm available at any time. I'm happy to answer emails, text messages, anything at all, um, with, with any questions on that. And again, I respect this could be a total exercise of futility.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So one thing that I hear a lot of is new business. Are we talking to anybody? Are we hearing from anybody that's interested to come have new business?
Now, when you say new business, are you, are you talking about the bank building or are you talking?
No, no. It's not the bank building.
Yeah, okay, I was going to say.
Just in general, in general, are we hearing people are interested in coming to Oak Hill and open business?
Absolutely. So here's the next other problems that we graduated on to. So when you go down Main Street, for example, you're going to see a lot of vacant storefronts, right? So why not just go panhandle for tenants? Well, you can't move into a building if the roof's falling in. So the reality is we've had to kind of take a step back and do more of an inventory of. The, the buildings that we have inside commercial zones. And then the other part of it has been working with, um, partners to identify. Funding sources, again, for grants, forgivable loans and low interest loans. So that we can help our business owners fix the building so that a tenant can actually go into it. You know, if somebody needs twenty thousand square feet and they want to open tomorrow, we can't put them in the best he's building. So we have many buildings in town that are just in a state of depravity, but they cannot be leased to a viable business yet. So that's another big part of our development is helping these business owners to find funding so that repairs can be made. Um, we made a big step last year in our, uh, engineering assessment. That we're now offering through the city. It's a five hundred or a thousand dollar assessment that any building owner can. Uh, request so that they can learn more about the condition that their building is really in from a knowledgeable third party, an engineering firm. And then, uh, determine what repairs they need to make to get that building habitable from there. It's a great, great question. I appreciate that. And there are many, um, there's a lot of interest in Oak Hill right now.
What I don't want to see is, as you see in Fayetteville continue to expand. And new things come that way, and then Beckley, they're expanding, and then Oak Hill is just in the middle, and it seems like we're just not getting. We're not getting the new business. Everybody's going around us.
Oh, sure. I respect where you're, where you're coming from there, for sure. Um, but I mean, the reality is. We just don't have that many businesses that are in great shape right now, um, or many buildings, and that's a, that's a big challenge for us. Um, that's also something that. Another reason that this comprehensive plan update, being an actual plan, is so important. Because with this additional funding, we get to spend a lot more time listening to our community. You know, if you're comparing like our Oak Hill community, for example, to our Fayetteville community, uh, we work wonderfully together. You know, Fayetteville, when they make a decision, essentially is going to need to listen more to the West Virginia Tourism Department. And their growth is going to be in that specific area. Whereas what we get to do in Oak Hill that I think is a little bit more fun is we get to be a lot more resident centric. Or resident centered than, than like, for example, Fayetteville does. Um, so that, that additional funding for the comprehensive plan will be a lot more time speaking with our community members. So that our constituents, we can understand from them what, what they want to see in Oak Hill in the future, what matters to them.
Do you have any questions for Allison? All right, thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Allison.
Anybody have anything on MS? Okay. Any council comments?
I have one.
It's great.
Couple of things. Uh, the welcome sign out on nineteen, see the columns are in place, but where's the sign?
We have a sign already, but we can't put that sign in until all that stonework is finished on it.
So we're still looking on that.
Yes.
And the second thing, I know we talked about it earlier, but can we do anything to help with that handicap down? On Virginia Street in, in.
We can build the sidewalk from the Virginia Street to the trail. But, and I, I understand the states, just what they're saying is. The only place they put a walkway and a, you know, a crosswalk is at a stop sign. People are stopping. It's not a stop sign on Virginia Street. They said they'd put a sign up, but who's liable if they go down there and get hit by a car? That's the only thing that the state don't want. Really don't want to put a crosswalk. We can put in, we can make arrangements to get a sidewalk accessibility from the street to the trail. And they can get, you know, make it easier.
Cost, would it be?
I don't think so. Not, 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 no longer than that would be.
Can we please, please, please do that?
We don't, sort of, price. I don't think it'd be.
Pretty much. She says several times, and there, there is a name, it's a strong.
Anyway, it goes, she's going to have to walk. Either down the street to get to where the sidewalk is, or up the street to get to, you know, accessibility.
We can sign.
We can't do the sidewalks now for her to get to the crosswalk.
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking?
Oh, no, 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 no.
We can, we can.
But it's not going to get her there. She's still.
They're going to have to walk the road. It's not going to be a designated crosswalk. And it's just going to be an accessibility from the street to the trail.
I understand that.
I tell you, if you can do that.
I'm still asking.
Well, we, we can put the access in, that's the problem. State said they would put a sign up, a trail sign, you know, just saying a crosswalk. But nobody.
I'll tell you, if you go down for Gene Street down there with that cross, and then a little sign by the big, sit there for a minute, nobody stops. No. Say, don't pay attention down to something, not just about this because of the sidewalk. I want it for her also, but. Should the state agree to do it?
Well, you know, and, and, and they'll never agree how they want one at Duncan because it's not, it's not a stop sign.
Absolutely.
Dog.
Yeah.
The only place we would ever get them to do it would be at the corner of, but it's got to be behind the stop sign, yes. We're looking, we're looking, right now at the school is putting in crosswalk at school. Handicap accessibility, but we met with the state, it has to be behind the stop sign.
And we have to do it.
We have to.
We're not going to draw.
They'll put the crosswalk, they'll put the cross, striping down, but we got to pay for the sign.
You know. Um, I have to, Southern West Virginia at one time was trying to change that. With the State Department highways, and they seem, it's been a while now, but they seemed optimistic that they would be. That you could put a sidewalk in under there at a stop sign or a stoplight. They've made any headway, important or not.
Apparently not. We met with Steve Martin.
You just recently talked to him.
Yeah, well, we, we, we met with Crotty. And then, well, his idea was, the sidewalk project was to get the state to move, move it over toward the trail. Yeah, we had to move the top one, but. Yep. I said, you work on that first. Yeah, that's going to work out for us.
All right, any future agenda items?
Mayor, I had a question, a couple of comments actually. I just want to know where we was at with the, uh, vacant building registry. Yeah, because we can actually see it on the T I S yet, or. I know that.
No. We're, we're doing, I don't, are any of them on G I S? So, we do not. We, we are working on making, we're still restraining people and sending out notices, but it's not.
Well, that whole system is going to have to be completed, you know. It was never built to totally manage the banking shopping system, and so then, you know, started being used initially. This was finally being used, but I'm trying to prove what's in there now, I have to do it. But it wasn't set up to effectively manage that process. Since then, there were more conditions that were used, and it, it, it's a good approach, so. Not updated, and left for the West Side, we'll get back at that time. So any information that's in there, do not discuss this much. Any information that's in there, it happens. Five years old. And outdated and totally not anymore to look at. So in order to get that back up, we, we had talked about it. It's going to take extensive, open hearted assistance.
Well, one reason why I was asking that question, I mean, I know a guy that's actually looking. For two thousand, three thousand, it's quite a bit. I couldn't tell you.
Well, that was Allison's number. Getting Allison's number.
Commercial properties.
Didn't know who we needed to go through on that.
Allison, she has. She has that information.
Uh. Yeah, it was actually, the only thing I had, except for the state, good job on Central Avenue sidewalk and stuff like that, which is absolutely great. I can shed with their.
Uh, I, I have a question to tell you, if you could, um, you know, Parks and Rec is doing a great job, Dallas is doing a great job with all this stuff out there. Want to give them a shout out. Things are looking good all over. We did apply a while back for some grants for the park, I think it was the L W C. Have we met, have we heard anything back? Just, have we heard anything?
We have, actually. We, we have, um, we've received feedback, so, so. Step one is to get it to the state. Step two is the state sends it to National Park Service, who's the ultimate fund. For their pre-review. And so they review it, they pre-review, and then give you feedback, for the officials. And then, we received that feedback with the National Park Service to recommend changes, uh, just last week. Uh, all the changes that have been made that we can make, I think Trashers got, uh, one more document to change, and then that will be submitted. And informally, there's some, this discussion, it sounds like at this point in the process, we've kind of made it through. The first and second level of review without being rejected, so it looks positive.
Right, very good.
I mean, it's not a guarantee, but it.
We didn't get a rev.
What we're hearing is that there have already been a few applications that have been rejected out of this round of funding. Ours is not, so.
Awesome. It's good timing.
And there's good news.
No, we're getting it. Same thing. Here's your list of them. We get to redo them, but it's, it's good.
Any more future agenda items, anybody? Anything at all? All right, the announcements are, we will have our regular meeting June tenth, and you wanted to mention.
Yes, the mayor and I attended, um. The Leadership Fayette County graduation, I guess, and awards ceremony the other night. So the city of Oak Hill has scholarship, and that was given. To. Tom. Jackson, Jackson Pean. So he received a scholarship from us. Everybody in that group got a scholarship, but it was, it's a very impressive.
Angie, look good, spell nice.
I tried.
All right, well, thank you all, folks, for coming. We appreciate it. We are going to consider ourselves adjourned.